I would like to call the June 16th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Tommy Gartrell is going to have our invocation and Erin Holland will lead our Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
Let us pray. Thank you Heavenly Father for this day, for this opportunity to come together and conduct this school business. Thank you for all our faculty, staff, children. We hope they have a wonderful summer break and we'll be excited to come back in the coming school year. May the best to you tonight. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make it one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Holland.
I'll say.
Mr. Gartrell, that's second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 4-0. The agenda has been approved. I made this note or explanation at the 5:00 meeting, but Mr. Green is out of town. He said he would call in if he could, but we haven't heard from him yet. So that's why he's not here tonight. The next item on our agenda is recognitions and Ms. Tracy Buckingham is going to tell us about all the wonderful things that our 4-Hers have been doing this year.
Today, it is my honor to stand before you to recognize some amazing 4-Hers. My name is Tracy Buckingham and I'm a former educator from the Pickens County School System and I'm a product of the Pickens County School System and the Pickens County 4-H Program. But for today's presentation, I'm here as a certified Georgia 4-H volunteer, where I volunteered with Pickens County 4-H for 35 years. Our county agent, Justin Fellenbaum, sends his regrets for being unable to attend today as he is in a mandatory training that is taking place out of town. While several of the competitors that would be recognized here this evening have other summer commitments that prevent them from being here, we want to be sure to recognize the ones that are physically here as well as those who cannot be here tonight. But before we recognize these outstanding young people, I prepared a folder for all the board that looks like this that was laid at your station to give you a little more information about this competition that we are speaking about today so that you have a framework of understanding about 4-H and DPA. In your folder, you will find a brochure first that looks like this. It gives you some quantitative information about the Pickens County program specifically. I know that both in education and in business, cold hard numbers sometimes show the picture very clearly. I also know, being a former educator, that as stakeholders in the education of our youth, that there's more than numbers to any program. We understand that things cannot be quantified, such as learning how to be a productive citizen by our community service project work or how future success by learning how to respond at a moment's notice in an interview. Georgia 4-H has expanded the project areas to meet the interests of today's young person. While traditional agriculture projects and home living projects are still around, they have expanded the project areas to include STEM projects such as robotics and engineering, just to name a few of the different project areas. I've included those in your folder as well so that you can see the different projects as you have come. First, you must understand the contest that we're talking about, which is called DPA. That stands for District Project Achievement. And as the title suggests, we compete only against those that aren't in our district, which at the very basics, sounds not too bad. But we're in the Northeast District, which consists of 42 counties that represent small programs like ours with one agent to large counties like a Coney that has a 4-H office that consists of 10 staff members. There's a handout with some information that I've included that is meant just for the Board of Education that tells about the mountains that had to be moved in order to achieve these great results. The information is solely for you. It is not publicized or shared with the public in any way. The page looks like this. I would call your attention to the bottom of the page that notes some specific stats that are quite shocking when you sit down and really think about that in relation to the results that we received. Next, you need to understand the age division. Cloverleaf is 4th through 6th grade competitors. Juniors are at our junior high school and the senior level represents high school level. The Cloverleaf contest is held with only their age group present. While the juniors and seniors compete separately, they do it at the same event venue. At the Cloverleaf level, students start learning about a specific area of interest and they give a three to five minute speech in front of groups averaging 20 people. Now, if you can think about how intimidating that is for these young people to be a 4th grader and you're speaking in front of 20 people, both your peers and adults. Most all of our 4-Hers from Pickens County had their entire speech committed to memory. This resulted in some outstanding results for our county with 100% of our younger students placing first or second in our district. Out of approximately 350 competitors, Pickens County was awarded for the highest percentage of first place winners, which was 88%. I'll begin by representing these younger students first. Our two 4th graders who were from Harmony Elementary were unable to be here tonight. Both on vacation. What a lovely way to spend today. Sophie Morgan was in arts and Siobhan Towers was in public speaking. The remainder of our competitors at the Cloverleaf level were from Jasper Middle School. 4-Hers, please step forward when I call your name. Atomeo Bautista in Foods and Nutrition. Beardiana Valdivenas in Clothing and Textiles. Amelia Hooker in Forestry. Natasha Flores in International Projects. We also have two other students, Bo Tate in Robotics and Karina Mendez, who was in Communications, but they were unable to be here tonight. So let's give them one more round of applause. Yes, if you will, guys, come back up. I want a great picture. So y'all stand right there.
Yeah, I wanted to.
If you put.
Come over here in the middle. Sorry. Taking control. Thank you.
One of the interesting factors that I can share with you about the diversity of this particular group was that when we went to this competition, which had, as I said before, 350 competitors representing this 40 something counties, we were the most diverse group of any county. Several of these had either they themselves have English as their second language or their parents have English as their second language. At the junior and senior level, the competition gets much more in detail and is the result of one calendar year. So it starts in January, ends in December, but then the competition is the following March. Now, I want to point out a mountain that had to be moved there that I didn't list in that paperwork. During that January through December of the previous calendar year, we had no agent, only a secretary. We had two volunteers. The first third of the calendar year, one of the volunteers got COVID and had a stroke. The second third of the calendar year, this volunteer had a kidney transplant. So the accomplishments you're about to hear happened in one third of a year with no paid staff other than a secretary. Compare that to large counties that we had to compete against like a Coney who have 10 people on staff to help their students. These students must not only study and prepare a speech, which is in greater length than the Cloverleaf level, usually eight to 12 minutes, but they must also compile a portfolio of work in that area as well about how they taught this information that they learned to others, their community service and leadership activities that they have done over the span of that calendar year. There are less project areas at this level because the study needs to be much more intense and for many, it helps determine if they would like to pursue that area as a job career. At this level, with approximately 400 youth present, we again won the highest percentage of first place winners. Well, that really wasn't that hard to do because we had 100% of this age level with first place wins. I placed a copy of it, leased one junior level portfolio of work and a senior level portfolio so that you can look later at the range and scope of the work that is represented here. Never in our district, in the whole district of 42 counties, did a county have all participants win first place at this level. Never. We made history, people. Pickens County made history. Now, let's recognize. At the junior level, representing the junior high school, we have Dylan Lowe, who was in the robotics project. Sarah Y. Flores in textiles and Merchandise. Reese Davis in Outdoor Recreation. Sheila Flores in the craft project. And unable to be here tonight was Micah Newton in the engineering project. Can we please take a time to give a little?
Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, at the senior level, the bar is raised significantly. Their judges are professionals in the field and their knowledge must match that of the professionals. Portfolios are much more detailed, speeches increase in length and complexity of knowledge. The cooking skills in the food projects intensify. I will give you an example of the food project intensity. I met with Sue Givens, an 4-Her in this project, to get some advice on food competitions. We told her what the task was. She did a portion of the task in the time limit. The 4-Her is given to complete all portions of the competition. And you're going to hear the details about that in just a minute. They can be asked in the food projects, an array of questions, from food handling procedures to preparation and cooking skills to anything and everything about nutrition. Some of the judges are University of Georgia professors in the area of nutrition. This 4-Her in particular that I'm going to tell you about has one hour and a half to unpack all of her ingredients and cooking utensils, cook her meal, sanitize all areas, wash the dishes and set a decorative table with all nutritional information displayed. Now, I don't know about any of you that cook out there, but an hour and a half to do all of that is quite a task. And in the food for health and sport area, our 4-Her had to research how nutrition specifically applied to different areas of athletics, from preventing injury to strengthening athletic performance. He even interviewed the specialist at the UGA Sports Nutrition Department to make sure that he had all the research he needed. He then presented a 10-minute memorized speech on this information and completed an interview to test his knowledge in this area. These students both placed first in the district and for the first time in six years, Pickens County 4-H has two 4-Hers who are going to the state level. Molly Hooker will be doing her food preparation portion of the contest in a little over a week because there are no kitchens where the state competition is actually held. She must do it almost a month early. And then she will proceed to State Congress in Atlanta where they stay for a week and compete, as well as she will be joining Ryan Johnson there to do his speech and interview. This will take place in late July. So I want to ask at this time that Molly Hooker and Ryan Johnson step forward to be recognized.
It's fine. There's Sue. There you go. Thanks.
Again, I want to point out that we made history once again. We may be small, but we are mighty. These two placed first. We are going again for the first time in six years and we broke a district record with the only county bringing senior level participants that both placed first. I want to thank the board for taking their time for this update about our local program as well as recognizing these students. I encourage you all to take time to look at this information in the folder and join our Facebook page to keep up with what we are doing. The Facebook page information is located on back of the Moving Mountains page so that you can join that and if you do, you'll see what we're doing on a normal basis. It's important to recognize that 4-H is not just a club. It is an academic organization. The things that we do with our students complement the school and the things that the school does for our students helps our program as well. We work hand in hand and I hope that you will continue to support Pickens County 4-H and the work we are doing. Thank you very much for your time.
Ms. Buckingham, could we get a picture of you and your students with the board? I'd like to have that picture.
I think so too. I agree.
I'm coming back strong, Mr. Buckingham. Maybe in two years' time.
While we're gathered, Ms. Buckingham, there's one thing you said that I disagree with. There's one thing that you said that I disagree with. You said you were a former educator. You are not a former educator. You are an educator.
Thank you very much.
And as is normal procedure at this time, they can.
Thanks, absolutely.
Tracy, thank you so much. As a former Pickens County 4-H kid, I'm really excited to see good luck with it all now.
And between meetings, I had the opportunity to go through and look at some of your portfolios and I was so impressed at everything that they did and that's just incredible.
Thank you.
I was very impressed and I like the fact that you went from food to reading and went into that aspect because that's where my heart is as well. So that was fantastic. So you all just did a phenomenal job. I'm very impressed. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Oh, I'd like to just adjourn the meeting right here. You're just too eager, Mr. Gartrell. You are too eager.
Hard to follow that.
It really is. It's very hard to follow that. But we have to with superintendent reports. And so we will have Mr. Young take his stand up here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start tonight with always exciting CFO, Mrs. H. Smith, to give us our financial update.
How can you talk that?
I know. It's so hard to follow this stream. So, but yeah, somebody said this should be the end of the meeting. I agree. We'll try to keep you entertained through some of this stuff. All right, let's have a. Yes, please. We'll just go through our general fund and the other funds we present each month. The revenue collected through the end of May 2022 is 90.74%. Just always going to remind you at this point in the year, we will continue to collect property taxes, intangible real estate transfer, various other taxes through either July or August, whatever the state will allow us to do. We have expended 75.71% of our budgeted expenditures. I also remind you that in the month of June, we'll actually book three months' worth of expenditures for everyone except 12-month employees. So that's a fourth of our budget. So don't be too thrilled about the fact that it's only at 75% right now. We'll make up for it by the end of June. I think on the 29th will be our last payroll run that we'll pay out on June 30th. So consolidation of funds, this reflects expenditures through June 9th, 2022 and transfers only through the month of April. There's a process in place that does take quite some time to get, you have to go through several approvals and sign-offs. We actually weren't ready to do the transfers for May until after this report was prepared. So of course we'll have that. We'll bring this back next month and keep you updated on FY '22 as we enter FY '23. Of course, the school system has no debt at this time. Our capital outlay program, our SLOSS revenue for the month of May was $715,794.13. We earned interest of $1,689.39. We had one transfer from general fund for $190,000. It was funds. We have different sources, funds coming in through, but typically they funnel into general fund and we have to move them out to proper funds. So and our expenditures for the month were $1,643,875.75, which brought us to a month-end SLOSS balance of $8,153,234.68. Our special revenue, we've collected 68.51% of our budgeted revenue and expended 82.71% of our budgeted expenditures. I do need to ask the question, have any of you received your audit report yet? I have not received a notification that has been sent out, but it should be coming anytime. It should come via email. When you receive it, if you will let Mr. Young or myself know just to confirm that everyone does receive the report. Once we have the finalized report, we will bring it back to present, to present the findings for you. It went great. I'll go ahead and, you know, surprise. It went great. I'm really glad. I would not be happy about it if we were not in great shape with the audit. Do y'all have any questions about this section? You want me to go ahead with some of the other or you want to?
We'll go ahead. Since we've got several more, we'll go ahead and do them as we get to them. So we've blended it all together. Thank you, Amy. All right. Mr. Gillum? You can give us an operations and instructions.
I've got some updated pictures coming up for you on my agorn. Reason the roof's not going on is they've got everything in place with some special clips that they have to use that they should be dropping any day and it'll go on quickly. As she flips through here, you'll see most of the interior walls are bound up. So they're ready to start with the ceiling and you have a lot of conduit running, a lot of power, wires hanging down. I don't know if you realize, but there's probably 100 drops coming from the ceiling in this place where they used to prepare the animals for the shows. And it's really extravagant when you look at it and see it when it gets to that point. But making great progress, I think they'll make their deadline like they're hoping. Other than that, that's my report for this week. I'm going to ask Beth Thompson to come up and give you an update on the school nutrition ordering process and all. She'll do that. And then after that, Mr. Wallace is going to follow with some safety and security stuff that we're going to head with this year and just let y'all know what we're fixing to do and what we're starting up with. And then I think Janet's coming up after that to give you a report on the camp.
All right.
Tracy, there's still like fall.
Yeah, they say December, like you said in that.
All right. Thank you for the baton, Tracy. So a couple of things that I just wanted to report for school nutrition. And actually, the first one is on the school wellness program for the entire school district. And I just wanted to report, we have to do an annual progress report every year and all schools did complete their annual program assessment, which reports on their local school activities. And each school does have a wellness committee that carried out at least one wellness activity for all students this school year. Additionally, all schools were able to implement the district's wellness policy goals for nutrition education and promotion, physical education and physical activity goals and other school-based activities for schools. Most were also able to implement district goals for nutrition guidelines for all students available to students. I will be putting a summary of all of this year's results on the website later at the end of this month or by the 1st of July, literally. It is something that we just need to report and make stakeholders aware of the wellness activities in this school. Okay. With regard to student meals for school year '22, '23, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are returning to the normal pre-pandemic national school lunch program, school breakfast program. And this does mean that meals will not automatically be served to kids at no charge. So we will be bringing out our free reduced application again and households will be able to apply to determine eligibility for their children if they can get free reduced or if they'll be full price meals. We are going to be offering an online application this year and I feel like it's a good time to kickstart that and to make it as easy or as accessible as possible for households to apply and not have to worry about filling out a paper application and getting lost between the school and the student. about filling out a paper application and getting lost between the school and the student and the locker and the teacher's mailbox and all that. So we'll be doing online applications. We will still have paper applications available and we will also have a link on the website to actually download an application for anybody who wants to. And our applications, we will, we can't start processing until July 1, but we will probably make them available about the week of July 25th because my bookkeeper is a 200-year employee, or 200-year, 200-day bookkeeper. That too. That probably seems like 200 days. I know what I feel like. So anyway, so she doesn't work during the summer. And so once we put those applications out there, we have 10 days to process them and I don't have the ability to do that by myself. So anyway, that's what I'm going to do. And then lastly, I do want to share some news that USDA has extended a waiver, another waiver, believe it or not, giving school food authorities, which is the school food service program, the flexibility to not automatically raise the paid student's meal price. Typically, there's something called paid lunch equity, which we're supposed to every year assess and determine what the correct meal price should be for the paid student. And it's a formula that we plug into. The last, well, prior to the pandemic, I haven't had to raise the meal prices because we always have a positive fund balance. And so that was one of the things. If you have a positive fund balance, you can offset raising the meal price. So that's what I chose to do. This year, they're extending it even to districts that don't have a positive fund balance. So they're leaving it up to make our own personal decision. I talked to Mr. Young about it and I told him that I've decided that we are not going to raise meal prices for students next year. They'll be paying the same price they paid 2019, 20. It's been two years since families have had to pay for those meals. I think it's going to be a financial hardship for many families as we're all adjusting with inflation, with food costs and, you know, just everything, gas, just to get to work. So I don't want families to have to be making decisions. And also, it will give them an opportunity hopefully to be able to, if they're economically able to or qualified to, you know, complete applications. But at this point, my plan is to start out the year and assess again mid-year just to see where the school nutrition program is at financially. We are nonprofit. We're not supposed to make a lot of money, but I'm also not supposed to be in the red. So I want to make sure that I continue to stay in the black and knowing that next year, the cost to produce the food and the meals is going to far exceed the cost that we're charging plus the reimbursement that we're getting. And I fully expect that. And you all have seen the budget that Amy proposed and I did submit a budget that I anticipate my revenue to be far below my expenses. But again, I'm doing that because I have a fund balance that I built up that I do need to work down. So just want to make you all aware of that. We should be in good shape so that meal prices will stay where they are. And that's all I had to report on that. And I think later in the agenda, there's a, I don't know if I need to talk about it now or wait.
You can go ahead and talk about your current budget. But one quick question.
Sure.
The decision to start charging for meals is not a local decision. The decision to start charging again is, that comes down from.
USDA.
USDA to us, to all systems. So it's not a local decision.
Right. Yeah. And like I said, ordinarily, there's a formula that we're all supposed to fill in and raise by 10 cents a year or whatever. And I haven't had to do it for a long time. And so I will wait a little bit longer. So we'll see. We'll see.
How much are the school lunch prices?
Elementary is $215. Middle school, which is the junior high, JMS, is $240 and the high school is $245. And it's costing about $4 today to produce a meal. So anyway, I'm going to work on my fund balance. But it's the right thing to do. But last month, when I was here, I was explaining to you our problem with trying to find a, procure a distributor to provide us groceries. And I'm happy to report that I'd like to recommend Cisco Food Services of Atlanta. They've agreed to help out Pickens, Gilmer, and Fannin, the three of us, the mag 515. They don't want to leave us hanging. They know how important it is. So they came up with a counterproposal for us that we agreed to. It's not a traditional contract. And we basically will be getting weekly prices from them and then plus a fat, a flat charge, it's a fat one, a flat charge per case that they deliver. But it beats the alternative of not having food to be able to feed the children. So but that will be on the agenda later and I just want to make you aware of that. I'm very happy with it. I'm very grateful. And I was on a meeting with Cisco today and they're just, it's not going to be easy. It's going to be a challenge and they don't have a lot of the things that we need. A fourth, well, actually, three-fourths of the things that I'm used to using this year, I can't even get right now. So they're still working on pricing and all that. It's getting a little tight because we have to have a first delivery by the last week of July since school starts August 1st. But anyway, it's on the agenda and I hope that you will see your way to approve it on behalf of Pickens County and Gilmer and Fannin. Okay? Any questions?
I just appreciate all your hard work and I know this has not been easy. And I appreciate your kindness to take into account parents and caregivers in the county that they have additional expenses just trying to get to work and that you're trying to hold off raising prices. And I think that's very kind on your part and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think.
Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Young, thanks for having me out this evening. We have already, of course, put on preparations for the new position I'm taking on, which includes safety. And Mr. Gillum wanted me to talk about some things that we're doing. And, you know, safety is one of those things that we have to get right. You can't afford to be wrong even one time. So we are already talking about a lot of ideas and we've already implemented a few things. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about was just our approach, which is what I consider a three-pronged approach, which is prevention, preparedness, and response. I've had a couple of meetings today just about safety in regards to how we're going to communicate, how we're going to plan with the local sheriff's department, who also, of course, provides our SROs and, you know, works with us very closely on our safety plans. I always like to look at them, approve them for each building. So with my new position taking over safety, just a lot of evaluation, a lot of looking at what we're doing well, what we can improve upon, to hear other principals in other districts and even Chief Hall talk, we are doing a lot of things well that a lot of other districts aren't doing. So I'm very proud of that. I think we should all be very proud of that for our students. You know, we're here for school course curriculum instruction. All of that is really important, but that doesn't really matter if we can't keep kids safe. And we know that that's the parents and the stakeholders, obviously everybody in the community involved. They're number one priority. So and it certainly has to be our number one priority. So just give you a couple of ideas, some things we've done already. We're making sure, just at Pickens High School, for instance, which I obviously have probably the most knowledge about of late, we have a plan to have all classes where no one has to transition out of the building for class next year. And we've been working with Mr. Martin and the folks over there to make sure that happens and having to do some things through facilities. Mr. Gillum's been really supportive, Mr. Young really supportive of this plan. And what we have had in the past is, you know, with buildings fairly close by that they have transition in and out of for classes. And we've arranged a way to make sure they don't have to do that. Even though we have a welcome center, you know, where someone checks everybody coming in and out during a school day, still added layer of protection where the students aren't unsupervised outside the building. So this will still allow for students to go out to the greenhouse, go out to the tennis court, whatever, with a teacher. But transitioning on their own and having to get students in and out of the building every day, that cuts down on some security concerns, safety concerns. So in talking to the sheriff's department, they're really excited about that. Just evaluating everything that we are doing and then listing some ideas and talking about some ideas and ways that we can even do better. We have learned a lot, unfortunately, at the expense of some other places and some of the things that have gone on around the country. But I feel like if we can learn from those and apply anything that we can that's feasible here in our district to make us even safer and better, then that's obviously what our job is to do. So just a couple of examples, you know, having the trained SROs in each school, that's huge. Those guys are doing alert training right now, this week over at Pickens High School. And I participated in the civilian part of that training year thing that they like to do other than, you know, shoot at each other. That's with paintballs, by the way. But every part of it, I've been associated with and it's really, really eye-opening. And it really gives you a sense of what law enforcement's up against. But the more people we can train on our schools, on our facilities, on our buildings, to respond and be able to know the buildings in the unlikely event we have to deal with that is very helpful. It gives us a little more peace of mind. It gives them a little more experience and understanding if they have to come in our building at any point. And then just creating what I call a habit of vigilance. And that goes for all staff and students in the building. You know, there's a lot more student eyes in these buildings than there are adult eyes and we need them to have the confidence in to see something, say something. We've got a, there's an app the sheriff's department has and we have the opportunity for them to anonymously report anything suspicious they see. And that's very helpful. I'm glad we got that in place. Just not only inside the school but outside the school, social media, written hints, things that a lot of times people that are wanting to carry out these acts give an indication of ahead of time. So just the community, kind of training the community to be, have a habit of vigilance. I think that's a big deal. We also have, I was on the phone with a commander from the George State Patrol. They're coming to use our facility next week to do some training. That's going to help them. And also, in the event of a crisis, we're going to be calling on anybody. So they're going to be a partner with us as well and other local agencies that are out there. And of course, any of this is in correspondence with our local emergency management agency as well because then you've got the medical side of this as well. So prevention, preparedness, response is kind of the mantra, looking at what we can do to obviously prevent things. And that's simple, locking outside doors and a lot of things we're already doing. And then, of course, the preparedness is the training and getting people, you know, comfortable with having to take action if it came necessary, knowing what to do. Because, you know, in a crisis situation, if you know what to do, then disaster can be avoided or at least minimized. And then the response, of course, the initial response of what to do once that event starts or if it starts to take place. And then outside of that later of, if you do have to evacuate, you do have to reunify, all of those things. So it's a logistical challenge, obviously, because then you start talking about transportation, how to get the kids picked up, all those things. And, you know, God forbid we ever have to implement any of these things, but it certainly is something this day and time that we have to put on the front burner and keep on the front burner. And I'm proud to say that we are in a good place, especially in relation to some of our folks around us in other districts. And when the law enforcement guys see what we're doing from other places, they are very complimentary. So that should make us all feel good. But you can't ever let your guard down because you can't afford to be wrong, not even one time. So I'm grateful to be given the opportunity to head this up, work with people like the sheriff's department and emergency management agency here. They're great partners. They're great people that care to about this place and 911 center. All of those things have to work together in order for us to be successful. If we all work together, then our kids are going to be ultimately more safe. So any questions you guys have about maybe what's going on or any ideas or questions I can help you with about where we're headed?
Good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Hi. Thank you for having us tonight. I want to update everyone on our summer enrichment camp, Camp Cool of the Wild. We've been working on this, we started thinking about it in November, a really good planning time in April and May. And I want to really shout out to the, so many people that are helping with this. I put together some spreadsheets and I called some people together, but they are the workers. They're doing a great job. And I just want to say how excited I am again to be in Pickens County. I tell everybody every day, I spent 15 years somewhere else and in one year, I can't believe how friendly and wonderful everybody is. I really love it.
We are pretty wonderful.
You really are. You really are. I don't just say that. It's wonderful. But we just wanted to update you on everything. Hopefully, you've been able to peek at Facebook just a little bit. Destiny is blasting pictures every single day because we're having a great time. We want the parents to be able to see what we're doing, the community, the other teachers who didn't have the chance to sign up, but they might want to sign up next year to teach because we're really having a lot of fun. So many people in the district have come together in the community to make, just, we've been there two weeks and it's been four and a half hours every day. We're very exhausted at the end of it, but so are the kids. And they're having a great time. As they leave every single day, I hi-five them. There's smiles everywhere. I know several people in this room have been at camp already and I think they would agree that that's what they see every day. They're smiling and excited to be there and smiling on the way out and ready for a nap. So I think the parents are happy with that.
I talked to one of your teachers a day or so ago and she was just on cloud nine. She said, this is just so much fun.
Good, good. Yeah, they're having a lot, they're working so hard, but I think they're having a good time. So I wrote things down because I didn't want to leave anyone out. But we're enjoying, as you've seen online, you've seen the farming and animal activities on our onsite and our offsite. They go, each group has one day a week out at the Suzette Herman's farm out in the West End. They have their learning pods where they're working on STEM projects, fine arts, language arts. They're publishing a book at the end of camp. They're working on that. They have been doing all the experiments in the STEM classes where you've probably seen the roller coasters. They made some solar ovens yesterday. Didn't need too much for that in 95 degrees, but we did. They made terrariums. They have been working with pigs and sheep. They had some rabbits. They are learning how to dye wool using natural dyes. It's just incredible to me what the teachers have put together in two weeks. So I wanted to brag on them a lot. They, all the other staff who have been there to make sure that this goes off without a hitch, the kids can't get there without the transportation department. And they stepped up and they are bringing those kids in every morning and taking them home. Besides the transportation department, we have some kids who are going to Boys and Girls Club across the street. So if parents are able to work or working, then they can still send their kids and go across the street. So Boys and Girls Club picks up some of the children. Ms. Beth Thompson, as we know how hard she worked, she was able to work it out that we have free or no cost snack and lunch every single day. So her school nutrition department is working very hard on that. Let's see, who else we have? Oh, the custodial staff at Pickens Junior High School. We were like, surprise, here we are. So Ms. Vince and Mr. Ray and their crew are cleaning up every single day and doing a great job with that. The central office staff and school administrators who are helping out each day. Gail Smith, Kristy Bone, Mike Baker, Trudy Berry, Patrick Shea, Destiny Shope, Carolyn Wilkins, Chris Wallace, Chad Flatt for use of his school, and all the assistant principals and principals who are serving as one day as camp administrators so they get to see the fun their kids are having as well. I think Financial provided us with 300 water bottles. I think that was a pretty good move based on the weather lately. So we have that. Every single child has their own water bottle labeled, so they get water every single day. The sheriff's department is helping us with arrival and dismissal traffic. They are also onsite all day, every day as far as safety and security. We were really glad that we worked that out. It seemed pretty timely. We have the fire department who's coming out next week to help us with an egg drop challenge. So they're going to use their ladder truck and be able to see who can win the egg drop challenge of how high they can drop an egg without breaking it as they build some cushion around it. So those are some of the things we're doing. And then a special shout out to the people who are there every single day. So Scarlett Higgins for her amazing organizational skills and flexibility when every single day a kid has to change or go to a different transportation or have another parent pick up. And she makes sure those sheets are updated and teachers have rosters and she's doing a great job with that. Whitney Carnes and Kayla Kinser are social workers. They have worked through this week as part of their contract and they worked it out to be able to come to summer camp and help us all day with that. So Kayla is out at the farm where I hear she loves to be. She's having a great time with that. Kayla Kinser and Lamar Jones, one of our bus drivers, also volunteered to be out there because, you know, it is a wide open space. And so I was nervous to make sure that we had enough people out there watching the farm. So we have extra teachers out there and two extra helpers as well. Whitney Carnes, she's there every single morning and doesn't leave until the last kid goes home. She does the snack counts, the lunch counts, answers the phone, all those kinds of things, doing a great job. We have Gail Smith who's been coming out as the nurse because we have a couple, you know, when you need a Band-Aid or a little ice for somebody and things like that, nothing big deal. But, you know, when we're outside running around, sometimes we get a scrape. When Gail can't be there, we also have a volunteer, Lauren Chastain. She is a paramedic and also a student over at Reinhardt University in their nursing program. And she has volunteered her time almost every single day and is just very, very helpful over there in any way she can be. So I wanted to shout out to them. Most importantly, we couldn't do any of this without those teachers. And like I said, I put a call out to the teachers. We had 21 sign up within a day or two. And five different teachers reached out to me just independently and said that we're very excited. Would you like some help with planning? I said, absolutely. No one person can ever do this alone. So they came in, we talked about project-based learning where the kids could have fun and get their hands in on experience with things. And then they took it and ran with it. And they run the four different pods. That's how we came up with the four different areas. And they're doing a fantastic job. They ordered the materials. They set up and clean up every day. And like you said, they're just working like crazy. I'm so impressed with the teaching staff. It's fantastic. Special shout outs to Suzette Special shout outs to Suzette Herman and her entire family for help letting us go out to the farm every day and helping and supporting us out there, her husband helps out. David Chapman, Sonya Chapman is our leader of our onsite egg program, and David helped out the first week when we needed an extra bus driver, he was there. They both, Sonya and David, also brought trailer gardens full of vegetables, so the kids could learn about vegetables and do some cultivation out there and cut them up and try them and different things like that. And Amber Waters was able to bring some of her farm animals to the egg barn, so that's where we're working with the animals. Don't want to forget anybody, make sure. Okay, I think I got everybody who's been helping with camp. And I've also been impressed, and I think all of us have seen that in social media, where a lot of people are liking our pictures and doing some great comments, but what we don't see on social media is we are getting calls almost every day, either here or over at camp, from parents about how much their kids love camp. We had one, I'm going to try not to tear up here, but we had, we had one yesterday where we had a little guy, a young one, who she said he really had a tough year at school and he struggled, and sometimes she would just beg him to go to school and he just wasn't happy, and we're working on that. She said that he jumps up every single day and is so excited about camp, and I know who he is, and I walked around, and he's one, another teacher there knows him, so he's got a connection, and the teacher said he was amazed, because he never speaks at, during the school year, he's a little guy, but today, even at lunch, he was talking to everybody and having a great time, and hope, that was one of my biggest hopes, that they can come to school. We hope everybody has fun all year long, but some kids have a little special need to have some different support. And so, he's learning to meet with different kids of different ages and different teachers, and I'm hoping that he can go into his next school year and be super excited about school. But we get calls every day. I called, as they were leaving, the teachers two days ago, I asked one of them to come over and talk to me, and I said, "We had a parent call," and he went, "It was really a good call, what are you doing?" So, they get a little nervous when I say that, but I would, the parent called me to shout out to that specific teacher about how wonderful he was working with their child. So, I hope that everything continues for the next two weeks to be a great success. As far as the heat, we have posted illness, the heat illness signs in all of our classrooms and sent them out to the farm, we've talked to the teachers about it, we do realize that it's near 100 as far as heat index. The farm has an outbuilding with a huge fan in it, so they're in the shade all the time or they're in the building, they were playing some, with tarps and some water spray, so we're trying to make sure they're staying cool, they have their water bottles filled, and keeping an eye on the teachers as well, because they're out there in the heat. But I think that's what we have for camp, so do you have any questions?
Sounds wonderful. And I can understand the teachers' gasp, because oftentimes the phone calls are the negative ones.
Right.
And it's wonderful to get the positive phone calls, that's great.
Well, thank you for that opportunity for letting us to do this.
Oh, thank you for all your work, and thank you to everyone who's participated, that's great.
It's this team and everybody else out there.
It's always a team, yes.
Yes, thank you so much.
Mr. Holland, did you have some?
No.
I was thinking, Janet, for that. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goodman.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I would ask for an amendment to the agenda due to the loss of Mr. Smith. Item I, the MEC contractor, will not have a quorum on that vote, so I would ask that item I be removed from the agenda. If I could get forward to make motion to vote on that, please.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Gartrill made the motion to remove item I.
Yes, ma'am.
From the agenda. Remove item I.
Can I second?
You can.
I'll second.
To remove item I. And Mr. Holland seconded the motion. All in favor? The vote is 3-0.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. My understanding is that Mr. Smith had an employee emergency and had to leave very suddenly. And item I, Mr. Holland will not be able to vote on that item. All right, thank you, thank you, sir. All right, does that take care of operations and construction?
It does, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. A lot of good things happening in our school. Very exciting. All right. Then we'll go on to action items, and the first item is approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve personnel action report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Mr. Holland, seconded by Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 3-0. The next item is approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports Ms. Smith presented? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Holland seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 3-0. Next item is the approval of the FY22 budget amendment. Do I have a motion to approve the FY22 budget amendment as presented?
So, move, Madam Chair.
Okay, the motion is made by Mr. Gartrill. Do I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 3-0, passes unanimously. Next item is the approval of the FY23 tentative budget. Do I have a motion to approve the FY23 tentative budget as presented? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Gartrill seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, it's a conservative budget, as we've been doing, and we've been coming another budget for the last few years, and I expect this to be another year.
Yeah, and we will end up in the black, all of things being equal. Takes, it takes a team, but I am very grateful for Ms. Smith's oversight. Is there any, okay, any other further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 3-0, thank you. Next item is approval of the FY23 salary schedules. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Madam Chair, cut out before the vote, just a moment. I'm pleased this evening to ask for approval of the FY23 schedules of salaries. Yet again this year, the board has had the vision to recognize the need to adjust salary schedules for our employees in order to stress to them the value that they bring to the district. These efforts are designed to address the current labor issues existing across the nation, and I hope they prove to be successful. Before asking for approval, let me take a moment to illustrate. This year's schedules will reflect an increase in pay for all classified staff. Certified staff will receive a $2,000 annual pay increase from the state, which our board will add to at the rate of 10%, which will also become a permanent part of their pay scale moving forward. All of these increases will be implemented by September checks. I would also like to point out that including the bonuses the board has approved over the last two years, every staff member in this system has received additional pay, which I believe reflects the value this board holds toward its staff. I applaud the board for this vision and ask for the approval of these schedules this evening.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate that, that extra information. Thank you so much. I concur with Superintendent Young, we are very grateful for all the staff that we have. Couldn't do it without every, every single person is a vital, vital person, is a part of this team. Do I have a motion to approve the FY23 salary schedules as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gartrill seconded that motion. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to say I'm proud of this, definitely. I know we moved mountains last year to have a, have this salary schedule mainly for classified folks, but it's due to, you know, Coach Parker and Amy's hard work, but I think it does reflect the importance of all staff. Obviously, teachers are boots on the ground, but kids are not happy if they're unhealthy and they can't, you know, if they don't have anything to eat, you know, those kind of things. Front office workers are sorely needed and definitely appreciated. I know my time up there at the high school, those folks, many in this room can attest, they deal with minnows and sharks. So, I will let you know that we, as, I mean, I can't speak for the board, but I know the board as a whole definitely, definitely are in full support of this, and hopefully this will continue to be the trend moving forward, so.
Absolutely.
I don't know if there's much that I can add there, but to bring one point that I don't think have been made, on most of this, it now is uniform, it's not piecemeal, it's not all over the place, it's very consistent on every level of every job here, and I'm very proud of that.
And all of that couldn't be done if the students couldn't get there. And those, those bus drivers, those wonderful bus drivers, those are the first people that those students see in the morning, and oftentimes that sets the tone for the day, and that is so incredibly important. And sometimes the teachers get valuable information from those bus drivers as to what is going on at home, why that student is behaving the way they're behaving, and sometimes that smile from a bus driver can turn the day around for those students, and I'm so incredibly grateful for them as well. All right, anything else? Anybody wants to say? All right, all in favor? The vote is 3-0, passes unanimously. Thank you so much, gentlemen. The next item is approval of ESS for the FY23 bid for substitutes and paraprofessionals. Superintendent Young recommends approval of this agenda item. Do I have a motion to approve the bid submitted by ESS to provide substitute teachers and paraprofessionals for the school system's FY23 school year?
Just kidding, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Mr. Holland made the motion. Ms. Finley will second. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'm very grateful for our substitutes and our paraprofessionals. This company has upcharged us over the two years to give our employees the bonuses, and I'd like to go on record as saying that I liked that bid and I thought it was unnecessary. Ms. Smith, can you give us the figures on what those did upcharge?
It was 18%.
It was 18%. I know in the second round, it was $18,000, because it was $100,000 bonuses. The first round, I would have to, I would have to research that, but it would have been 18% of whatever was approved. We did not have as many paraprofessionals at that time. I would hate to, I hate to venture a guess, but it was less than $18,000, because we did not have as many pairs at that time.
Further flying of bonuses that leads me to, to the paraprofessionals and substitutes, and they upcharged us a fee for it, and for that reason, I'm pretty happy with this company, but I am not unhappy enough to look against this measure at this time.
And the good news in the negotiations on the new contract, the upcharge rate will be 0%, so moving forward, that's a little good news.
Yeah, that's great.
I'll also add to that, that we were, we had a discussion about the upcharge being a part of, and that was, everybody on the board said no to that. So, not only did we give them the base, you know, increase, but we also paid that in addition to. So, I mean, nobody got shortchanged there, it's just this company probably only spent a couple hundred electronically filing us, got some money out of this.
And I appreciate Superintendent Young for doing that negotiation and bringing it down to C-Round for the coming year. That's great. All right, thank you. Anything else? Want to say? Yeah, we, none of us were, were happy about that 18%, and I'm glad we have it down to zero for the next, for the coming year. All right, all in favor? The vote is 3-0, thank you. All right, the next item is approval of bid with Cisco Atlanta for school nutrition. And this is what Ms. Guth was talking about, Ms. Thompson, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the bid with Cisco Atlanta LLC for, for school nutrition as presented?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Gartrill, thank you.
I'll second.
Mr. Holland seconded the motion. Any discussion? Further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 3-0. Motion passes unanimously. The next item is the approval of sex education curriculum.
Madam Chair, I have Dr. Goodman here this evening to speak to the board, she is now chief academic officer, this falls under her purview, and I know she's excited about that. If you will, Dr. Goodman?
Enlighten us, please.
I like summer camp, okay, we'll talk about that. And those are not related, I wanted to say.
Well, that's good to know.
So, we did a review of materials with the Required Sex and Health Ed Curriculum Committee, I think we did that Tuesday afternoon. We had parents, students, counselors, principal, health teachers, the required members of the committee, and in reviewing this...
Parents were involved in that.
Yes, parents and students. We had some wonderful students attend as well. So, for the Edgenuity course in ninth through 12th grade, that is the only change, we used to use Gradpoint for health, but that is no longer available to us, so we had to find a different health, health curriculum. Edgenuity is a software platform that we've been using for quite a while at the Pace Academy. We have used it, I believe, in credit recovery before, and we are going with Edgenuity for all coursework as far as credit recovery and the Pace Academy, so we're already using them, we're very familiar with them, students are familiar with it, and their health standards in the health course that we're hired to review just follow the Georgia Standards of Excellence for health. So, we looked at it, the health teachers agreed, the principal was there, the students reviewed it, and they chose to go with, we had to pick, we had to pick a new course, so they chose Edgenuity, everyone's familiar with it. So, that's what we did for that one. We have, we do have the opt-in where we bring in medical professionals. Opt-in means that if students get their parents' permission, they're allowed to come to a few sessions where we have outside medical professionals, mostly nurses come in, and the students can ask questions and have discussions beyond the health teachers that we do have. Again, they only come if the parents have agreed and signed something to come to it, okay? And I believe Ms. Walker discussed that last year, about how we bring that in.
Do the, do the parents know ahead of time what will be discussed?
Yes, yes, they review the topics with them, and they do talk about that the children, the students are allowed to ask questions, but it's basically related to, it's supplementing the health ed curriculum. So, they go through the health ed, it's scripted, and the health ed teachers say what they're supposed to say, and they do the software as listed, and then the medical professionals basically are there to just answer questions about what they discussed. From what I, I haven't been there, but that's what the health teachers told me to do. We did have the two students that were here, and they agreed with that, that they thought that was really good for the students, that they were able to ask some questions and get medical professionals' opinions on that. Choosing the best curriculum is for the middle school, and they recommended that they continue this, it works fine for them, and again, they want to reiterate that these curricula give a scripted program, they stick to the script, this is what they're supposed to be told, it follows the Georgia State, Georgia Standards for Health, and that's... It follows the Georgia State, Georgia Standards for Health, and that's what they discuss. As well as the Child Help Curriculum, this talks about just being careful and safe. They don't even really, the K-4 counselors mentioned, they don't even say sex. They just talk about how when you go to the doctor and that's the only person besides your parent, and those kind of preventive, preventing abuse type topics, that's what they talk about with K-4. They've been using that for quite a while. And one of the counselors did mention that it is quite outdated and, and they do stick to a script, so they don't want to change it, but they're, they want to form a committee, and I had talked to Ms. Stone about this, since she's over counselors, that they want to take a look at some other options. But we're going to adopt this for this year and then see if there's anything that's maybe more up to date. So we'll be looking at that again next year. The high school, one of the high school students did agree with that and say that she thought that there really wasn't anything that was, that she needed to learn, remembering back to fourth and fifth grade. She said, you might want to look, she, she was the one who brought it up. She said, we might want to look at that because it's really not much there. So, so I, we appreciated her input on that. But, and then for all of those curricula, that is an opt-out letter. So we send home a letter with every single child geared toward their age level, and then the parent sends it back if they do not want their child to participate in the health course. So they have that option as well.
And I'm, I don't have children, I, my children are grown at this point, but I'm trying to think what questions my parents have so that I can ask you, and it's on camera so we can answer questions throughout the county. What, if the child opts out and does, is not in these presentations, what other options are available for the child? Where would they be?
The, oh, where would they be? They would just be in another classroom, working on a worksheet, watching an educational, they would not be participating at all in the health class. So they either go to the health class or they're with another teacher doing an ultimate activity that has nothing to do with it.
But it would be an educational activity?
Yes, yes, yes. Like if they're doing some practice for math or an educational video or something like that.
Okay. I, I just wondered.
Right, right. And, and the parents did ask in the meeting, they, they asked us to clarify what was specifically in the K-4. And they said that they, they kept it, like I said, very low-key and generic, did not mention any parts by medical names at all. They just talked about what's under your clothes type of conversation. So it was very generic. But they just want the kids to be safe. It was more about being safe and, and if you have any issues at all, here are some people, some adults you can talk to, like your teacher, your counselor, your parent, your doctor. That's what they talk about, prevention and, and keeping kids safe. But that's what we have. If you have any other questions about the health curriculum?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve the sex education curriculum to pick this county school system as presented?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
All right, Mr. Gartrell, thank you.
I'll second it.
Mr. Holland made the second, seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is three oh. All right, and we have removed item I, the approval of the lease agreement with Mountain Education Charter High School. Okay, we're going to go on to item J, or, yeah. It will be, I guess if we approve it, amendment generally would be product, item I, but taken care of. Okay, the approval of the internship agreement with Georgia Southern University. Do I have a motion to approve the field experience and internship agreement with Georgia Southern University as presented?
I'll make that motion. And I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Holland made that motion and Mr. Gartrell seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is three oh. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 12th, 2022 call meeting at 5:00 PM? The May 12th, 2022 regular meeting at 6:00 PM? The May 20th, 2022 call board meeting at 1:00 PM? And the June 2nd, 2022 call board meeting at 1:00 PM? I'll make, okay.
Go ahead.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And Mr. Holland seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to make sure that you understand that the 20th and the second meetings were work sessions.
Okay.
Standard work sessions.
20th and the second were work sessions. Thank you. All in favor? Vote is three oh. Motion is approved. Next item is approval of surplus. Harmony Elementary, yes, sir. Oh, I bet you're raising your hand.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just saw you out of the corner of my eye.
You're just trying to prolong this meeting.
Approval of surplus. Harmony Elementary School, Jasper Middle School, Pickens Junior High School, Pickens High School, and the SED department are requesting approval of surplus materials that are unrepairable and/or out of date. Do I have a motion to approve the surplus submitted from Harmony Elementary, Jasper Middle, Pickens Junior High, Pickens High, and the Special Education Department as requested? I'll make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Mr. Gartrell, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I would say with Tucker not here, he can't make a comment about technology, so I'm still in the blank there. I heard a lot of the pyramids are coming down, so that's a good thing.
We did, we did have a request, and I'll talk to Superintendent Young about it. The Boys and Girls Club have requested some devices. The ones that we're surplusing are old and do not have many, much life left in them. But we might be able to work out something and we'll bring that to your next work session. I'll have it nailed down by next week.
Be an excellent, if there's any issue left for them, I'd be an excellent player.
If we can do that, there are some, I remember from last year, there, there was something said that sometimes we can't do that, but
Correct.
Ask for Ms. Smith and Mr. Young to work out. All in favor? The vote is three oh. Next item is approval of surplus school bus. The transportation is requesting to surplus a school bus. Do I have a motion to surplus this bus?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Mr. Holland? Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Gartrell? Is there further discussion?
I will, I will tell you that we normally surplus all our buses at one time and take them to an auction. This is Calhoun City Schools. We have a special ed bus that we needed to surplus this year. And they asked if we had one, they were in need of one, and they offered us $4,000 for it, and we normally get about $2,500. So they have bought them from us before and this is the reason I'm bringing it to you at this time.
What did they say? That sounds like a no-brainer? All right, any other further discussion? All in favor? Vote is three oh. Okay. Public participation. Mr. Young, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
We have not, Madam Chair.
All right. Board comments?
I'll probably continue to have a wonderful song.
All right, we appreciate you all. Next item is motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Holland made the motion to adjourn. Mr. Gartrell, yes, I heard you. Seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Three oh. Have a wonderful evening. We are adjourned 7:19.